Nothing I know. She's coming, she's running late.
Good morning. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
The time is now 9:42 and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Ed meeting of January 10, 2012. What, 12? Who would've thought we'd make it this long? 2012. His call to order. First item is approval of agenda and order of priority.
I move approval.
It's moved by John, supported by Eileen. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same?
Aye.
Thank you. Hi, Mary Ann.
Good morning, Mary Ann.
Welcome.
Good morning.
We will, we would've known you're on in a moment because Merz is going to introduce, make introductions of board members.
So, as long as we're with the phone, let's, for this time, start with the phone. Mary Ann McGuire is joining us via phone today. She's from Detroit, usually sits immediately to my right. So she'll be with us on the phone. To Mike's left is John Austin. I'm assuming you all know that Mike Flanagan is the Chairman of the Board and State Superintendent of Public Instruction. John Austin is the President of the Board. He resides in Ann Arbor. Cassandra Albridge is the Vice President of the Board, and she resides in Rochester Hills. Nancy Danhoff is on her way. She's from East Lansing. She's the Board Secretary. Kathleen Strauss from Detroit. Paul Galbunski, he is the Michigan Teacher of the Year, who sits at the Board Table and offers his insights to the Board. And he is a Career and Technical Education teacher from the Oakland Schools area. His campus is in Royal Oak. And across the table, you will find Eileen Weiser. Eileen lives in Ann Arbor. Next to her, Dan Varner resides in Detroit. Next to him, Richard Zilee, also residing in Detroit. He is the Board's NASB representative. Mary Ann McGuire, I've told you, is on the phone. Thank you.
Thank you, Merz. I'm sure other Board members have some comments. I don't want to jump the gun on this, but just to mention, beloved former Board member, Liz Bauer. Her husband, George, passed away recently. We're all saddened by that. She wrote a beautiful email to the Board about that day. Kathy, you knew her as well or better than most of us. So, anyway.
Her emails were just amazing.
Yeah.
She's amazing. And George was amazing, too.
Knowing Liz, she may be watching or listening right now, so we're thinking of you and George. So, our first item, Committee of the Whole meeting, is discussion of My School Data. And before I invite our guests, the My School Data portal, this is something that is really revolutionary, and I think the Board's going to be excited to be able to see it in a little more detail. It provides views of Michigan's education data to help educators, also parents and community members. This is, this is when we talk about light a day in understanding what schools really are and what, what their performance is like. It's so that they can make informed educational issues, decisions, rather. I think it's really timely when you think, no matter where you might've been on the recent change in the charter law, it's obviously opened a new era of educational decisions for parents. And the more informed they can be, the greater likelihood that our kids are going to succeed. And it's to enable school systems to prepare a higher percentage of students to succeed in this, which the Board continually talks about, career and college ready. And I think it's a tremendous tool, and it's also a tool for school districts themselves to understand where they are. Sometimes, I know in my own situation, data can help you understand where your strengths and weaknesses are, and then you can attend to your weaknesses. So, with that, I'd like to invite Tom Howell, Paul Bublowski, Sally Vaughn, and David Judd to the table. They'd come up. And Tom and Paul, even though they're technically a separate division in SEPI, we share quarters here in the building. We work really closely together. And they've been just outstanding in this partnership. Sally, you want to?
Yeah, so as Mike said, we are very pleased to be able to showcase to you this morning the My School Data Portal. And hopefully, you did get a chance to explore it a little bit before the Board Meeting, so you could see how you could dive into different levels and get information on various school districts and kind of compare them to other ones. We're very delighted to have our partners from SEPI here with us today. Before we really start to go over the, and showcase the system for you, Dave Judd from the Bureau of Assessment and Accountability is going to talk a little bit about the partnership that, between the Department and SEPI that led to the development. Dave?
Thanks, Sally. Well, it's a pleasure to be here.
And if I may, just, these are still tough, but, because I don't think I did it very well a moment ago, but the closer you can get, or even pick it up and look like Madonna or something by holding it around your neck, the more we'll be able to hear each other.
Can you hear me okay?
I'm sorry, Dave. Please.
You good? Okay.
While they're doing that, let me just really quick give a little intro.
We have had a nice experience working with SEPI. Keep me in mind, they're in DTMB, so they're a different, different division of the state government. Also, with the ISD partners, Macomb, Chiawasi, Calhoun, very, very key part of making sure this portal worked in a way that was meaningful to people in the district schools, ISDs. I'm on a local school board, and so it was interesting to kind of see how this, bringing together this educational data in one place can be powerful, as Mike said, as information, and kind of shedding some light on some more data points. And it was tough. We had places, data in different places on the MDE website, and to bring it together at people's fingertips and being able to compare and contrast and see some trends and a more easy to see graphs, that was, we think, very helpful. It's a starting point. We know there's more work to be done, but the collaboration so far has been very positive and very uplifting. I mean, it's, it's tough sometimes to work across state government, and this has been a good, positive experience. Tom?
Thanks, Dave. All right, I'm Tom Howell, Director of SEPI. I don't know if any of you have met any of us at SEPI. We're typically behind the scenes, trying to support.
We know Paul. We know Paul.
Yeah, you know Paul. We brought Paul over so that you'd recognize one of us. That's good. But thank you for having us here today. Very quickly, we're going to go through really what we've done in the past year with our partners at Education and at the ISDs. We're going to talk about a few things we'll be focusing on in the coming year, and then really, I'm going to turn it over to Paul and let him do a quick demonstration of a little bit of the functionality in the system, so you can see the possibilities. And then you can do some exploring on your own at your leisure. Over the last year, we, of course, made sure that the site handled both private and public access. So, right today, we're going to talk about that public access, what the taxpayer will see, what a parent or a student might go out and take a look at. But there's also behind-the-scenes private access that will allow a school administrator or teacher to get further into the details behind the data, so they can hit closer to the classroom in terms of what they're seeing and understanding for their own students. Our approach was to focus on the requirements under the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act over the last year. We had to make sure as a state we accomplished what the federal government required us to do to bring in, I believe it was $1.3 billion for public education in our state. We also were working to make sure that we were supporting the Department and the Governor's Office in their initiatives for career and college readiness across the state. The Governor put out the education dashboard, so that was really a launching spot that allowed us to say, "Look, those are some really great statewide metrics. How do we get closer to a district and to a school and bring that closer to home?" So, we built the portal around a concept of drilling through and getting closer and closer to the classroom level with the data. We had great partners along the way. Bureau of Assessment and Accountability worked with us very closely on incorporating assessment cuts, or assessment results, and eventually the new assessment cut scores into the site. We are reporting information about college readiness. We've got ACT measures, and of course, the Michigan Merit Exam results as well. We do publish the Annual Education Report, which is required under Title I of No Child Left Behind. And we're starting to focus more on providing information about enrollment. What's the race ethnicity? What's the student makeup, gender, program participation? And we're putting some of those metrics in the site as well, so we have a good context before we really start digging into the data about a school. From a post-secondary perspective, Michigan is very proud to have worked very collaboratively within the Department, SEPI, DIT, also with our public two-year and four-year colleges and universities. We are now able to link up student data from our high schools up into post-secondary, track them into the, the post-secondary institution, and understand whether or not our students are going on and enrolling in colleges and universities across the state and across the nation, and whether or not they're persisting in their pursuits of a higher education, and whether or not they're doing that without the need for additional remedial course-taking once they arrive at the post-secondary institution. So, we're very proud of that work. That truly was a collaborative effort, and I think one that was well worth the effort. We also are publishing metrics on educator effectiveness. In year one, that was focused primarily on principals. Under ERA, we are required to do that for teachers as well, and under state law, in the next year. So, we'll see more on teacher effectiveness really next fall. In the coming year, again, the theme being collaboration, we are working with Office of Retirement Services, Office of State Aid and School Finance, Superintendent's Office, on putting together the best practices dashboard metrics. This is one of the four deliverables that a school or district can choose to complete in order to receive, I believe it's $100, additional state aid per student. So, the state is taking data that we already have as, as a statewide entity, bringing that together and displaying it to help the districts move in that positive direction. In the coming year, we'll be working with the Office of School Improvement, Field Services, coming up with new metrics around pupil attendance, mobility, and retention in grade, so that districts and taxpayers and parents have a better understanding of those situations in our schools. We're working with, again, with Joseph Schop and Dave on persistent lowest achieving reports. We're working with State Aid on school district financial comparison reports, so that the taxpayer can see how our schools are doing with the taxpayer dollars, and whether or not they're directed to the classroom and teaching students. We're working with the Office of Professional Preparation Services on school district staffing reports, and with Special Education within the Department on really data portraits and things that are of value for that community as well. Career and Technical Education, Paul, you're, you're well informed of that topic, but we are working with Patty Cantu's office and working to make sure that there are metrics that help us understand how well those programs are aligned, maybe to a local or regional workforce need, and making sure that the programs are supporting the taxpayers by region. I'm going to let Paul really get into site improvements. What you're seeing on the screen right now is the first generation of the system. A little bit wordy is the feedback we're getting. You've got to drill through, and Paul will do that for you today. We are looking at really-
Tom?
Yes, sir.
Can I suggest that the Board, this would really be helpful, if your first instincts on some of this, as you're, Tom's walking through, you could make a note on positive and maybe worthy of rethinking. It would be helpful feedback, because this is, this is a living document, and it's always good to get first reactions, where you might say, "Boy, that one doesn't work for me," or, "Geez, that's really good." Okay?
Absolutely.
I'm going to turn it over to Paul.
All right. Yeah, the, the slide here in front of you shows some ideas that we've had, based on the feedback that we've been receiving. Since the site went live back at the end of the summer, every audience that I've gone to, we've been asking, "What are we doing right? What do you want us to add? And how could we improve?" We also did some usability testing. We are getting some feedback, and yes, any input about how this might work a little bit better, I think, would be very useful and timely, because we are starting to work with our developers in terms of making refinements to make it a little bit more usable and to address some of the things that folks have, have brought to our attention. We are, one of the things we're looking at is possibly putting the dashboard right up in front, putting data right on the front page. The idea would be that you wouldn't have to drill through some text in order to find that stuff. We are trying to make it easier to select which school or district you're looking for. We're trying to give a little more summary information when you first select that school. So, these are ideas about how we might make it work in the future. We're trying to make, to do an improved, detailed display of data. This is an area where we've been looking particularly at some of the other states. Other states were also required by ARRAE to do some public reporting, and we're trying to look at, you know, what, what did we do well? What did some of the other states do well? How can we improve our data display on the site? What I'd like to do is really move into a little bit of a demo of what's out there. You're free, of course, to explore along with me. You've got your machines in front of you, and I'm hoping that you would have, you know, taken a look at this stuff. We're at www.myschooldata, M-I-S-C-H-O-O-L-D-A dot org. And over on the left-hand column, you can click on Dashboard and School Report card, and this is our statewide dashboard, which really mirrors the Governor's Education Dashboard for all of the K-12 metrics that are on the Gate, the Governor's Dashboard, but also adds some metrics that the Department of Education came to us with and said, "You know, we didn't have certain things on the Governor's Dashboard, but, you know, we really think that this is valuable stuff and that it belongs here." So, we've got that on there. We've got several of these metrics that you can drill into, and things like the third grade reading proficiency are on the statewide dashboard. When you click into that, you then can bring up the statewide MEEP proficiency. You've got breakdowns by racial/ethnic. You've also got trend data, so we can take a look at statewide MEEP proficiency. Is it going up or down for third grade? That sort of thing. You can go in and drill in and select a different grade level or subject, or a different breakdown. I want to look at, you know, the gaps between males and females on eighth grade math, whatever. All of those settings are, are in there. As you can see, we've got tabs for MEEP, My Access, the Michigan Merit Exam for high schools. So, if I go to MME, I would have to go in, do a selection for 11th grade. Hmm. We'll go back to the dashboard, and then we'll see what we got. But the idea is that that dashboard is really sort of a central piece that we can then drill in and find a district. So, we'll go down and find the Lansing School District, since we're in Lansing this morning. And we're going to look at district-wide data. And so now, that dashboard has really become the, all of the Lansing data, and I can do that for any district in the state. And then when I drill into a metric like third grade reading, and I go to my topical settings, and I can, I pick out, I want, let's say I want eighth grade math instead of third grade reading, I can get that. And I'm going to pick all students, because what I'm going to be doing here, we can get an idea of, is, you know, this is just a single-year bar chart and then a data display. But we can also get a trend line. Is it going up or down? And you can see how low it is, but then you can also see that it's pretty stable. It's not declining dramatically, but it's, it's declining a little bit. But then I can add a comparison. So, I want to add, let's say here, I want to just compare the Lansing to statewide. And I've got now two lines on my chart, and I can see statewide versus Lansing. And what you can see is that little bump in 2008, '09 is really mirrored in the statewide data, which is the higher level. But you can also see just how Lansing compares with the statewide data, you know, here. If I was a parent and I was choosing between districts, or if I was simply a policymaker looking for comparisons, I might pick a, another urban district. And we'll take a look at that comparison. And what we can see here is that really, scores in Lansing are relatively low, but scores in Flint are even lower. And you can see there that the trends are moderately similar, but it was just sort of a, "Okay, I want to take a look at the comparison." I wanted to come back and look at some student information. And I want to take a look at just our student counts. How many kids do we have in the Lansing District eighth grade? And for this purpose, I think I really want, see if I can get an all grades selection. Because what I want to take a look at is, here's the demographic data on Lansing. You can get an idea of how many, you know, students in each racial/ethnic category. I can take a look at trend data for Lansing on enrollment, and I can see trend data, you know, for each of the, of the racial/ethnic groups. What I want to do, though, just to show off the comparison piece, is I'd like to add my Flint comparison again. Hmm? Yeah, I, no, but what I want is the, I want, yeah, I want the district. There we go. Because what I wanted to show was that you've got declines in enrollment in, in Lansing, but you've got a much larger decline in enrollment in Flint. And I picked these because Flint and Lansing are relatively similar sized, and when you're looking at the, the numbers here, you're getting kind of interesting comparisons. Another tool that we've had a lot of interest in on the site is we, we've got, of course, the student counts, the graduation rates. The last piece I want to just really highlight is the non-resident inquiry. We've had a lot of interest. I'll take a look here. We've, we've kept our selection with the Lansing District. When I look at my snapshot on non-resident data, this is based on the fall 2010 data. We're getting ready to add the fall 2011 data. But what you're seeing here are the, all of the school districts where we've got students either that are coming into the Lansing District, or that students who live in the Lansing District are, if you will, leaving for. And just to get a, the idea here of this chart is I've got data that goes down and says, "I've got students who are coming into the district from, I got one from Albion, I got six from East Lansing, I got 14 from Holt, and so forth." But then I've got a group of students leaving, who live in the Lansing District, and who, excuse me, leaving the Lansing District and, and attending. Nine in Bath, nine in Charlotte, 25 in East Lansing, 73 in Grand Ledge, 130 in Holt, and so forth. So, these are, and let's go back to the topical settings and make sure I've got the right, yeah, these are, oh, this is just all the other non-resident. What I really want to do, yeah, I got one minute, exactly. Let's do, I really want the school of choice kids and the other non-resident, because that number, the numbers there were a little bit low for me. But the idea is that you can go in and take a look at how many kids are coming into the district, how many kids are leaving the district. We're getting a lot of very positive feedback from districts about the utility of this in analyzing their own student, pupil accounting, and in trying to figure out where kids are coming from or, or coming in, and benchmarking themselves against other districts. As Tom said, we're going to be adding a lot of things to the site. We're working on usability, and we want to make this, you know, the, if you will, one-stop-shop for Michigan education data.
Thank you. Mike?
Board members, comments, questions? Eileen? John? Kat?
I want to commend you on this, because I chaired the Committee for the National Assessment and Governance Board, of, of reporting dissemination that tries to meld the Center for Education Statistics, NCES, with releasing information. And it's not easy. For us, we have the same problem that you do, which is that we've got researchers who need information, there are schools trying to use it states. But we're also really focused on parents, because we feel that in the end, for the, for the government, is that the most important audience is a parent trying to figure out whether their kid is learning. With that in mind, because this is excellent, the, the one comment I'd make is that for a parent, I think there's too many layers of data before you can get to what this means for a child. And if it's possible to balance this very important function of helping schools learn how to teach children better, what I would like to see is that there's a student summary that is kind of far down on the left-hand scroll, and that's the information, that's the explanation, the student information up there, right above the bar that's highlighted right now. That's the explanation for everything that's in this, for all the data that's here. And I'd love to see that easier to get to, because it took me a while to find it. Also, for graduation rates, which I, I found that information very gripping, but I'd love to see you have the same explanation for each of the, for the roll-up. Also, after as many years as I have in education, roll-up meant nothing to me.
Right.
You know, I was stunned that I, another term, a big one for education that I had never seen before.
Yeah. We're, we're spending some time going back and rethinking with our ISD partners how to make this a bit more taxpayer-friendly. It's very academic.
Which, which is a natural evolution. You know, we've been through this with NCES. I totally understand. And I, again, I commend you for stepping outside of that domain, because that's what everybody's been doing for a long time. So, trying to do all the translation on this is not fun, and I really am very proud to be part of seeing this develop. So, but on the graduation rates, it's the same explanation that's given, I can't pull it up real fast here. You give the same explanation three times in a row for it, and it's the graduation, it's student summary, student count, all right, graduation rate, trend, snapshot, and roll-up is exactly the same explanation. And I think that you could make it shorter and richer. It would make more sense to, to the parents and to, hopefully, students. Hopefully, we've got some kids looking at this, too. But thank you for doing this. I know it's a work in progress, and I commend you on it. It's terrific.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eileen.
John?
Too. I want to appreciate the work, and it, we're, I think we're getting there, and I really appreciate the hard work and effort to also keep incorporating good ideas, like you heard, and I'm sure many more, and how it can be really, 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 really user-friendly and taxpayer-friendly. You know, our former colleague, Reggie Turner, I know this was something he oft asked for. I think Reggie would be appreciating very much on behalf of the parents who we need to inform and make decisions. Couple of quick questions. Are we there in terms of the public universities and community colleges, I guess, Tom, participating in the overall P-20 data system?
Yeah, we had 100% participation by our colleges and universities. Not very many independents are participating at this point. The way we-
So, I wanted to ask, how are they, and are they open to participating?
A lot of the staff at the colleges and universities, independents, are interested in the conversation. They see some utility that could be returned to them as well. We're having a little bit trouble with the association that oversees independent colleges. They've not come out strongly in support of participating, so we're working through that gently and trying to prove the value of the tool to both our, our public partners and then also our independents over time. We can't sprint down the post-secondary path, because there's so much that has to be accomplished in pre-K-12 right now. So, part of that is an economy of scale issue for us. We're just, we're a small office. We've got a lot of stakeholders and a lot of demands coming our way. Post-secondary is important. Independent colleges are important, because they do serve both our, both of our public and private students as well.
Just editorializing, as we all know, we need everyone to get some sort of post-secondary credential that matters for their ability to navigate, and know whether they're succeeding in the labor market, too, which is the next step, what are they earning? So, I think we should all be advocating for ways and helping- So I think we should all be advocating for ways and helping find the resources to put in place a system that can build the universal data system. And the private should participate, particularly if they take any public Pell Grant or other money. I mean, that's the hammer that we should, as a nation, and as a state, say, if you want to be subsidized for higher education, uh, we need you to tell customers whether you're delivering good graduation rates, completion rates, et cetera, et cetera. Other question, can you do inter, intra, inside district, um, school transfer, if someone moves from, uh, a middle school to another middle school in a district, is that captured in here?
It is not currently captured in here.
We are preparing a report on mobility that will have district-level mobility statistics, so that we will be looking at how many kids, um, are stable in enrollment within a district, how many kids are stable in enrollment in a building. We know, actually, I, I've seen some of that, those statistics in, in analysis, but we are looking at a, a mobility report.
Then that is a huge issue for particularly the big urban districts and other districts that face the biggest challenges, is that mobility. And how do you deal with it? How do you know where it is? And interpret data, because they can look terrible if they're losing kids, uh, or if performance is wildly changing, which may have nothing to do with what's actually happening in the classroom.
Kath, please.
I want to thank you, too. But my first, my first reaction was I didn't know if this was designed for the professionals or for the parents. And if it's for the parents, it needs a lot of work. Or maybe it should be two different portals or something, because this is very complicated.
Right. Yeah, that's really good feedback, um, Ms. Strauss, and we are looking to other opportunities to figure out how we could repackage some of this in a more taxpayer-friendly manner. So that was some of our initial PowerPoint, where we're going to try to work through making it a little bit better organized for someone that's not as familiar with the academic conversation.
And the comment you made to start, that it's wordy, I think is, it is. I found that, too. It's a, I mean, it depends on who you, who your audience is, though, if it's, it's for, if it's for the parents or the taxpayers, as you say, that many of them are not as computer-savvy as the professionals are supposed to be, anyway. And it's, it's hard to find what you're looking for. So, at least it was for me.
Yeah.
And I'm not a pro.
Good feedback. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kath. Richard, and Eileen, and Nancy, Cassandra. Richard, sir.
Um, I, I, uh, support the, the comments made about, um, really appreciating or getting this data out there. And while, um, things should never be more complicated than they need to be, on the other hand, the reality is often complex, and, and I think that's a real strength. If parents come and take a look and say, well, choosing a school district or assessing, valuing a school district isn't as easy as I thought, I think maybe that's a real gain, a real insight that many parents, uh, do need. Now, one of the concerns I had is I'm looking at the, uh, report on students not tested. And for most of the districts, I, I only got as far as Benton Harbor, uh, but the, the number of students not tested in the schools adds up to the "all" column. But for Benton Harbor, uh, and I, I, I thought I saw the same thing with Ann Arbor, but I could have just misad, I, I maybe forgot to carry a one for Ann Arbor, but, but for Benton Harbor here, they've got thirty-eight not tested, but that's a greater number than the sum of the, of the school not tested that they have listed. So I'm, I'm curious, are they, did they fail to report a school, or did someone in Benton Harbor do the addition and, and get it wrong, or, um...
Well, the, the state did the math, so apparently we did the math incorrectly.
Okay.
Uh, we'll get back with our partners on that report and do a little bit more validation and check that out. I don't know what would explain that at this point.
Okay. If, if things don't add up, that suggests, maybe there's some missing data, or, or maybe I don't understand the pattern at all, and so I'm looking for internal consistency.
Yeah. I think there was, uh, expansive amounts of data gathered for those particular not-tested categories, and it was rolled together to make it a little less wordy.
Mhm.
Through columns in that particular report. Perhaps the roll-up missed, um, a section. We'll have to get back to our partners on that one.
Okay. And I'll just comment, the, uh, you've got, um, uh, reasons not tested, medical, uh, ELPA, which I'm not sure what stands for, absent, refused, refusal, missing, expelled, and then other is the big category, which, which seems to be no explanation. Um, so I, I guess that, uh, means that maybe the reporting schools didn't assign a reason for a lot of these students.
Right. And I can answer that. The federal government has certain categories for the not-tested. Obviously, we, we want to test all students, so it's not really, uh, a reason to be out of accountability. But, uh, but if a student was in a hospital, I mean, there are certain medical pieces that happen, and so those are some of the federal categories. The other, as you can imagine, got used quite a bit. We were concerned as well that there was a large number of students in, put into that other category, and so that's something that we're, I think we want to tweak as we collect in the assessment office, that data in the future. So, those are some of the things. And those are some of the trends we see as we post this data, as we get feedback, we, we see these kind of things. And as we measure, we see the, and as people see that we measure, we see that that data collection improves with time.
Well, and, and I don't mean this, I, if, I don't, I hope this didn't sound like a criticism at all, it's quite the contrary. Good data suggests questions for research. And the big number of students who miss testing for other reasons is, is precisely one of those questions that you've revealed by assembling some data for us.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you.
Thank you. Eileen?
This is, this is like trying to hurt elephants, I think, but, um...
Eileen?
Yes?
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but if we can keep the microphones on the table towards the edge, they actually can't hear you as well on...
Okay. So if I can hear me out, you can't.
That's great.
Reverb, okay. Sorry. Um, uh, the, the elephant hurting thing. I, uh, there are a couple of questions I wanted to ask, and a comment I wanted to make. Do you have an estimated time for being able to track longitudinal data for student hiring from college?
Yeah. Workforce data is not something at this point that we are positioned to handle. It is something that we'd like to get into, but typically, tracking a college graduate into the workforce is something that is going to require additional state agency involvement, probably stronger post-secondary involvement in terms of the types of information we'd have to, have to gather from them. Most of that's handled via survey by a college or university, and it's difficult to acquire that. Right now, in our early relationship with post-secondary partners, we're trying to be very mindful that this is, um, added reporting for them with added benefit in return. So we have to move slowly in that conversation, but it's really great insight.
Perfectly reasonable response. Then I wanted to also follow that up with remediation rates, because there's wild variance between what we're hearing on an individual basis from community colleges for remediation, up to eighty percent versus the Attorney General's report, which is about twenty-seven percent for first semester community college students. And I wondered if there's any insight you're gaining on that.
Yeah. I think we came in slightly over thirty or thirty-five percent for remediation. Uh, one thing that we did learn in reviewing the data is that our colleges and universities all really determine that on their own, in terms of what they believe remediation is. I'll give you an example. Um, we had one four-year university, a large one, uh, that calls introductory golf a remedial course. Well, it's probably not a course that bears credit toward a degree, but it, it's also not a remedial class, something that they should have learned in high school. So we're going to go back and tighten up those definitions a bit. Um, I don't know what the Attorney General's Office did in terms of their study. They could have excluded things that were non-core curriculum. I think that, uh, our P-20 Council suggests that we should take a look at math reading, um, composition, sciences, those types of courses that really do resonate well and align with the Michigan merit exam, um, and really start looking at those categories, and seeing if we can really tighten down on what we mean by remediation in our state, and get a better gauge on how we're doing in that, those core curriculum areas.
I, I think the board would like to see that sooner or later, but I don't know what role we have or the department has to play directly. And it, it, it's interesting, because, uh, it sounds like it's information gathering, and yet there's clearly such huge repercussions for K-12 that it can't, for us, it's much more, um, urgent than information gathering by itself would, uh, indicate.
Absolutely. And we'll be returning a lot of those metrics right back to the high schools through college, or college and high school feedback reports, so they can start seeing and understanding where some of their students may be struggling after they leave.
Okay. Then this is a little more mundane, but I'll close out. The data for student success, um, that's the most dense of the areas to try to read as a parent, and yet it also, it may be pretty much internally focused, it may be that a parent does, shouldn't be reading it, uh, but I just wanted to point that out. And, um, if I were looking at this as a layperson, um, uh, the one thing I would comment is, to me, the student summary and what you have for early childhood are all part of the same thing, and that as you look at trying to separate out, you can't do what the National Center for Education Statistics does, because they actually have a written report. So that, you know, the written report goes up there, and then links it, or the hyperlinks, and you can drill down. Uh, and I understand what you're facing, but I'm wondering if there's some way to think about this from a parent's perspective, as opposed to a school district's perspective. And I don't know how you can really manage the site better if you do that, but it may pop out at you in a way that's not popping out to me. Thanks.
Thank you.
Eileen, I'm wondering to your first point, if maybe Tom could help us, or the team could help us with a letter that maybe John and I could sign on behalf of the board to the president of the trustees of every university, kind of explaining that issue, and why it would be helpful to us as a state board if we could better understand remediation, get data that's appropriate. I mean, sometimes, maybe that's just a tool we could, we'd, we'd get a response, I believe, at least, and it might put on the agenda something with no malice they're not thinking about the same way we are. So that, that might be a way to address their participation.
I, I think that there's another, um, concern here, too, because, uh, the, the community colleges with whom I've spoken are adamant that it's a very high remediation rate, and they're talking about core subjects. So, uh, I've talked with a number of them about how the Attorney General's Office could be at such a different value for that. And I think there's an Attorney General conversation, too. I, I think everybody needs to be on the same page, because the information from this is critical to K-12. Uh, we don't have jurisdiction over community colleges, but they would love to be able to, from what, from, you know, they want to be able to educate kids, they don't want to fix K-12. Uh, you know, they, they see a role here for the state that's important for them to be able to function in, and they're not getting there because of, um, the lack of information for coordination.
Yeah. I'm, I'm just suggesting that might be a technique that would engage them, and, and if we wrote it in a non-threatening way, because I, I think they legitimately are concerned that there's some interests that are trying to magnify that issue beyond what it is, and I think what Tom's describing, where it would be down to kind of the core, would be a helpful way to think that through, but just a thought for...
I would also suggest that maybe you want to work with MCCA and the President's Council to come up with more of a unified definition through them, that they can then push out as well.
Yeah. I, I, that's a good idea. I don't know if your P-20 is doing that.
Right. We are. MCCA and PC SUM both attend our P-20 Council meetings, and they are aware of the Council, and will make them aware of the board's comments around the common, need for common definitions, and maybe a tighter way to look at remediation.
And we'll just threaten McComb and a few others that we have special relationships with.
They have so much power.
Right. Um, okay, Nancy, I think, was next.
I have a question, will you get it, too?
Oh, okay, thank you. Mary Ann?
Um, I, I, thank you, first of all, and good morning, uh, for this great, uh, I, I've been looking for this data for a long time, so this is phenomenal. Um, getting back to one of the concerns that Eileen had about the user-friendliness of this, of how do we go down through all of the layers, um, I'm wondering if it's possible. I just, I just tried a, a test here to see if this would work, and it didn't, so I'm thinking may, perhaps, this is something we might do. If you go to the dashboard in a school report and you choose a district, then across the top, not only does it say dashboard, but school report card and school, uh, report card summary. When you go to each of those tabs, you have to re-enter the district that you want to be in. If you've already entered Lan, I just put in Lansing Public School District on the dashboard, is there a way that you can link it so that now all of the tabs on all of the things, until you change that school district, will come up with that? And then that way, perhaps, when people click on those things, they don't have to re-enter, and they can just automatically have, here's everything in my district that I'm interested in. Is that possible?
It is possible, and it is, in fact, something that we've had several comments about, and it's one that in our, if you will, second generation, we are working toward. This is Dan Hoffman.
I can tell you're already growing so quickly that I'm sure you're almost at that second generation.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
No, 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 that's, that's very helpful, and it is something that we've been hearing, and it is one that we want to, uh, one of the issues is that some of our data is at a school level and not a district level.
Right.
And one of the things that we've, you, you may be looking at, um, you know, NEAP data for East Elementary, and when you go over to look at the non-resident data, uh, that's done at the district level rather than the school level. And one of the things we want to make is that navigation as seamless as we can make it.
Well, I think, you know, I, I absolutely agree with you. In fact, it took me a while to be able to get Lansing Public School District to come up, because it has to be a choice. I can't just type in Lansing Public Schools, because the drop-down menu then lists all of the schools, and I've got to choose one of which, the district is one. I have to tell you, that is non-intuitive. So, um, I think that, that, that there's, and I wish I was brilliant and could tell you exactly how to solve that, but I'm not.
That's why we're the technical people.
[laughing].
That's why they have technical people.
Yeah, exactly. But I think that, that, uh, you know, even just a flag, because I, I did notice that as I was looking for, for instance, some of the, um, uh, non-student, I think, I'm trying to remember what you called it, non-student, non, non-residence data, of course, that has, has a different, uh, demographic than, than does a particular school. So, you know, maybe those are just things that flag, when you go to that page, you know, this district is reflective of, or this data is reflective of the entire district or a single district, a single school or something. But I just think it's easier to get through if you can just go through all of the tabs once you've selected a, a district, than it is to have to re-enter that every single time.
Oh, I know what happened here. The, all right, I, I did what you just suggested about the, the dashboard and going into the school report card.
Uh-huh.
And the issue is that, um, uh, the, um, report cards are issued on a school basis rather than a district basis.
Mhm.
So what's going on is that, um, I had been looking at the Lansing District dashboard.
Right.
But in order to go to a school report card, I've really got to pick a building rather than a district.
Right. And so, all I'm suggesting is, instead of saying, please select a school to view, um, well, that, it does say that, yeah. I, okay, I see that.
I, I did try doing one school, and it seemed to work across all...
Oh, good. So it says, so at the school level, it'll do that?
Yeah.
Well, at any rate, the, the improving the location set is one of the things that is on our list.
Okay, great. Thank you so very much, I really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Cassandra, please.
And, uh, like my colleagues, I'd like to express my thank you for, uh, the information you've provided here. I, you know, I am appreciative of data. I think data's a good thing, and, um, you know, I, I hope that this is something that becomes very useful for parents and educators alike. My concern is and always will be, um, what we do with the data, particularly, uh, creating arbitrary labels based on data. And so with that in mind, I've been kind of looking at, um, the, the text and why it matters. And I think you guys have done a really good job of just laying out what this is, as opposed to assigning particular values to it. But there's one area that I think is a little bit of a contradiction, and that is, under the assessment results, if you look under ACT College Readiness, um, it has a great definition of what ACT College Readiness is, uh, based on, on the scores of the ACT, the probability of success, the fifty percent chance of earning a B or better, which is exactly what the ACT College and Career Readiness is. But if, if you click on the College and Career Readiness tab that's on the left-hand side, the definition is completely different, and it's based more on remediation, which my understanding is, our career and college readiness standards are based on the ACT standards, which are not based on remediation. So I think it would make sense to have those two things be aligned, as opposed to contradictory.
Thank you. We'll take a look at that with Bureau of Assessment and Accountability.
Thank you.
That's a good point. And may I add, just to that point while we're on it, do we have a way, um, I think I didn't do a service a while back when I only focused on all categories being met. Is there a way, when you show, for instance, twelve percent of the kids, that you can drill down to see what percentage in, in each of the, uh, tested areas? Because I think it, you know, you could find that District X is only twelve percent that all, the kids met all of... kids met all of the, that they might have reached 41% in math or something, and I-
I think there was. I think I saw that there was.
Was there?
Yeah.
Well, additionally, there's a lot more ability for us to display subgroup information under a count of 10, because of privacy issues, Mike. We've got to make sure we're careful. So through the data for student success piece that we use with the, the actual districts and schools themselves, there's a lot more detail behind those numbers that they can drill through and see.
Okay.
It's private access, though.
Yeah. Um, Dan, I think you were next.
Mary Ann.
I'm sorry, Mary Ann, thank you for, you know, we're gonna, I think we should put your picture up over the phone here, that'll remind me.
The red light goes off when she-
Name, anyway.
Okay.
Uh, Jane, um, I wanted to thank the, uh, the team making up this case. I have, uh, just represented a tremendous amount of work, and it's been over a number of years, so your, um, efforts are very much appreciated. Um, while my colleagues have been having trouble negotiating school, uh, reports, I haven't even been able to log into it. I, uh, I don't know if it's my computer or my device or what, but I haven't been able to log into the link. And, uh, my concern is, um, what sort of data we're keeping on dropout and expulsion? Districts are, uh, still accountable on the numbers of dropouts. Are we differentiating at all between dropout and expulsion? And what are we doing apart from tracking?
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, I guess an answer to that, in terms of the public portal piece, we do have dropout numbers reported in the graduation, a dropout statistics, under the Student Summary tab. How do we handle expulsions? That is a temporary exit status that is used. We take that into consideration as we compute both graduation and dropout cohort numbers. We're very meticulous about making sure that each individual is tracked, so I, I guess, I'm not sure what the concern is, except that we do make sure that we track the student until final exit from the district. So if they're expelled, they could still be off-track continuing, and they still be included in a statistic that's neither a dropout nor a graduate, they could simply be off-track.
So we're not, we're not tracking expulsion, is that what you're saying?
We track-
Are we, are we listing expulsion?
Yeah, we, we do track expulsions, um, in the Michigan Student Data System. We do not yet have a report that would suggest how many expulsions there are within an academic year for a district.
Is this in a DARE?
It's by school or district, correct?
Uh, it's gathered both at the district and school level.
Okay, thank you.
I think it was Dan, and then Nancy, and then Eileen.
I'm just wondering what we have to do to get it, because I know that there are DARE issues, and obviously there are data collection issues, but since we have the right people at the table, if there were a chance for this discussion to take five minutes, I think it'd be smart.
Let's, let's do that, do we? Having just been summoned this morning in a case related to a DARE, I'm interested in the answer to this, too.
What would you like me to address?
Well, it wouldn't necessarily be Tom, to get him off the spot. Let's get some help on this, while, while we're on it.
Do you want to define it? It, it's just that we know that the expulsion, expulsion rates are, are a critical component of putting kids out of school, getting them behind, and then making it so that they're in a prison system. And the question is, what kind of intervention is possible on a state level to get data back to districts and to schools and to parents, so that they understand the enormity of the issue? And then be able to address it, because so many cases, what we're hearing is that schools aren't aware it's happening, and that teachers don't know they're doing it.
Anyone? As the, as the Ferris Bueller guy would say, anyone? Anyone?
Well, again, we're talking-
We'll have to look.
Well, we're talking about adding data collection that we do not currently collect, so there would be, uh, there'd be an issue with, how do we pay for that? And then Tom would have to have then the money in SEPI to be able to set up the system to be able to collect that. So it's somewhat complicated, but it could be done, there would need to be some resources, though.
But, but legally, is there, are there issues that would keep it from happening?
From the DARE perspective, it's just unfunded. Suspension data in particular would be challenging for districts. It's not something that we hear they keep in their student information system readily. So there would be cost to the district of modifying those systems, and then daily tracking suspensions. And I don't think we have a common definition across the state of what constitutes the difference between a suspension or a short-term expulsion. So with local control, you've got definitional issues that would have to be wrestled as well.
Thank you.
I think it was, uh, Dan.
Um, so let me add my congratulations. Issues of data collection aside, in terms of access to data and presentation of data, this is a pretty significant step forward. I know a lot of hard work has gone into it, so thank you for that. I was actually on the site about a month ago, pulling information for a presentation that I was going to make, and noted at the time, and just want to share with you, would be wonderful to be able to access the top-to-bottom list here as well. And I, I was trying to do some crosswalking of the two for this presentation, and, you know, had to be in an entirely different kind of browser window to do that. So given the fact that that's a pretty commonly needed report for folks who are looking at this kind of information, I think just having it available there would be helpful, one. Two, um, and then I do want to talk a little bit about this, kind of parent usefulness of this information or presentation of it to parents, but beforehand, is there any sense or timeline about when early childhood info will be added up and running?
We are in conversations with Officer Greatstart. We also worked with ECIC on writing a technology strategy for connecting the dots between various state agencies, because there's a lot of folks that are in that early childhood conversation. It's not all academic data, a lot of it's health, social, emotional welfare as well. We don't have a timeline right now. I can assure you that we have to do more within the time span that we have to fund the project, which is through 2013, with possibility of extension in 2014. We have committed to ECIC and Officer Greatstart to continue that conversation and help them at least start getting additional information about some of the state-funded programs into the system. We're also piloting some connections into Head Start programs that are not operated typically by a public school district in the state, but private institutions. So we're, we're making a lot of headway there. We're able to connect up those Head Start students in Wayne County at this point into our Michigan Student Data System, and eventually take a look at those Head Start students and see how they do once they get into a kindergarten program. So positive steps, but it'll take some time.
Just out of curiosity, is that the entirety of Wayne County, including the city of Detroit?
It's a pilot program, Detroit is included, it's all of Wayne County.
Is included.
So, um, it, it didn't go perfectly, it's a pilot. But I can't tell you how many of Detroit's future students were necessarily shown there.
Right. Um, just, so, jump on my soapbox for just a second. I am increasingly, I mean, was already strongly convinced, and just even more strongly convinced the more, the deeper into this that I get, that the early childhood space is, is just critically important. I, I, I'm not sure even what, what, what information to pull, but, but in a, in a world where we all know that poverty is so inextricably linked to kind of academic outcomes for kids, and in a world where upward mobility, or in a country, anyway, where upward mobility is, um, uh, I don't want to be, um, well, it's more and more challenging a thing to, to realize. The start that we give kids really is critically important, and it's one of those few places, I think, where interventions really can make sizable differences in life trajectory. And so I'd love to see a real priority placed on getting the early childhood information in. I mean, I don't know if I'm preaching at the choir, or if this is even, you know, appropriate place to deposit this thought, but I just think it's critically important. Last thought, and that is the, this issue of kind of usefulness of the information to parents as opposed to districts. I haven't figured this out yet, and I, so I am really, I was just talking with Kathy on the drive up this morning, really committed to figuring out how to give parents the information they need to make great choices in, in a, in an environment where they've got to choose schools more and more, as opposed to default to the school around the corner. I don't know if that's, so I appreciate the push that my colleagues have provided around making this more parent-friendly, and I just don't know, at the end of the day, if this is going to be that. I, I've landed on their, kind of, their two, maybe we need two different systems. There is the accountability system for the governing entity, right? And so the state needs certain data in order to effectively account for the performance of its schools and govern its schools effectively. And that set of data is by its very nature going to be complex and difficult to navigate, and so on and so forth. And while we want to make it accessible to folks, I'm, I almost feel like it's the job of others to make, to try and boil that down to an essence that makes sense for parents. And I don't know if you've, so, I just want to, and I, I said, I haven't made my final decision on that, but I just worry about, um, efforts at this level to make this, it's going to be, to make this user-friendly almost defeats the purpose, it seems to me, for which it's designed, which is to allow for good governance, you know? So I know that's just a ridiculous thing to say, but-
No, what is it? I was thinking the same thing.
But yeah, I just, I feel like, I feel like there have to be another set of folks who decide how to pull what's useful out of this for parents and make that available to parents. I don't know if you're hearing that from folks, but I'm just curious about your reaction to that, kind of, the tension between user friendliness for parents and user friendliness for governance accountability.
The tension's definitely there. Uh, we, we've had brief connections with Michigan PTA. I think that might be a good group to raise that question with, and see how they might be able to bring the power of their association and resources toward maybe pulling some of this information out of the state system and putting it into a common look and feel that would make more sense for a parent. That is an approach. So we can, we can definitely explore that with you, and we welcome your additional-
I think Excellent Schools Detroit would be another.
Oh, well, we're, yeah, we're definitely working on that. I just, so I think that the notion of partnering with folks who really are spending all of their time thinking about how to make this useful for parents may be a more effective strategy than trying to make your presentation of it effective for parents.
You know, if I may, I'm, I'm trying to be a, a better chair and leave my comments to the very end, but sometimes to Dan's point, if I may, for a minute.
I'm tired, it's done.
Yeah. I just wanted to, you know, I'm trying to save mine till the end, which a chair should do, but sometimes I'm jumping in because it's, the point's up on the table. I think one of the things that might be a way to do this, and, is, is to have a suggested parent pathway, and a suggested teacher pathway, and a suggested, so that almost by the time you start with that first button, it, it takes the same stuff and massages it differently. Kind of Kathy's opening comment, so less wordy, but what is it? And that could be helpful from Excellent Schools Detroit, from PTA and others, to understand what that path, and I think the word suggested would be important, so that it's not like, you know, you can't see the other stuff for people that are interested. And then one other thing I thought in hearing your discussion is that, you know, with our new partners for, at the library, this is some, not just, Dan has not just been on this theme, I mean, a number of you have, which is, is still this disconnect between folks that are going to have access. And I'm wondering if we should sponsor or work with Nancy Robertson, who's now part of MDE with the Michigan Library, to not only provide training, but kind of a strategy for how libraries are going to be more, uh, what's the word I'm looking for, proactive in helping parents in a given community. We still have a lot of libraries, we still have a lot of them that, you know, a person may not have direct access themselves, but if the library's took on as one of their roles, that we're here to help parents make better decisions on a lot of things. You know, it might be an avenue that, when you, to get around the technology issue, for one. And just suggesting out loud that we should, maybe Friday we'll talk about this with Nancy Robertson, it could be, we, we're not, otherwise, we're not taking advantage enough of a whole other structure we have in place that is available and to, to folks in general around the state.
Can I, um, I'll, I'll be complete after I share this thought, uh, which is, so good ideas, and I, I want to be clear, is you should continue to make it as user-friendly as you can, right? I'm completely supportive of a beta version, and, I mean, keep making all those improvements, and at the same time, I just worry that no matter how much you do, it will never be the, the interface that parents really need, and that there may be an opportunity to partner with folks like the PTA or others to, to create that kind of opportunity for folks.
Thank you, Dan. Nancy, Nancy.
Um, I, first of all, just to finish up on Dan's comment here, when I wanted it more user-friendly, honestly, Dan, I wasn't thinking of parents, I was thinking of teachers and principals and, and building people who do have to make those on-the-ground kinds of decisions, and I, I want that as available to them as possible, which leads and segues nicely into the, um, suspension expulsion issue that you talked about, and I was, I was very interested to hear your comment. I'm not sure what, what that information can do for us. From a, from an on-the-ground perspective, I will tell you that, that schools that I work with, they are not aware of the impact that they're having many times on the students because of the severity of the numbers of, of in-school suspensions and then expulsion, short-term expulsions. And then it's only when you see it reported on the report card of how many days' absence, and you see half-days and quarter-days, and you're like, what does that all about? And you realize that there's suspensions from classes. And if it were two or three in a reporting period, that might be fine, but I've got students that have 30 or 40. When you have 30 or 40 suspensions and short-term expulsions in a quarter, you cannot learn. And so those districts need to know, those, those teachers, those principals, need to have some kind of data references where they see the trend data of their students to understand, I think, the severe impact that they're having on their children's ability, not even capacity, but ability to learn because of their, perhaps, if I want to give everybody the benefit of the doubt, their unawareness of just how many of those suspensions and expulsions they're getting from class to class to class, and not seeing the big picture until they see that trend data. And so to me, that's critical data, if we are going to make certain, especially for, if you look at that data in terms of ethnic background, and to see who is most likely to be the recipient of those short-term expulsions and suspensions. Unfortunately, from my, at least in the area that I'm working in, the experience that I have is that they are, they are shifted towards an ethnic group rather than another. And I, I think that's critical information in student success, so it's not easy to, perhaps, to come by, but if there's some conversation that could be had about it, or how can we utilize it? And I think our conversation later today on the, um, I've got to remember how, what we're calling that item on our agenda, um, uh, I can't find it here, the, oh, I know, it's under the, our, our, our agendas, um, professional learning policy and standards. That information is going to become critical as we look at our professional learning policy and standards, to help teachers have goo, and principals, to have good information about what it takes for a child, what's the environment, what's the culture, what is the, the process we use to allow children the best opportunity possible in learning. So that was just my comment.
Thank you, Nancy. Well, great discussion, you can hear a lot of kudos for your work, we do appreciate it, and appreciate your thinking about some of the suggestions made. I think it's all heading towards even a better product than we already have, which is a good one. And, and Mary Ann, I'm wondering, I did this the first time, and I shouldn't admit this- And, and Mary Ann, I'm wondering, I did this the first time, and I shouldn't admit this, but I went to my, like, MY a while back, and it's MI, as in Michigan School Data dot org, so I'm just thinking out loud if that might...
Yes. I can get the, um, the homepage, but I can't get the link from there. My difficulty. So thank you, Mike, I'll keep working on it.
Okay, Mary Ann. Thank you. Thanks, guys, very much.
Thank you. Nice to see you, Paul.
I thought I saw Susan, but no, I don't see Susan. Someone needs to, make sure she's comfortable to come in. Um...